Camera on, please. Call a meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Could I have an adoption to the agenda if there's no additions or changes?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
All in favor? Approved. Adoption of regular minutes, March 27th, 2023. Thank you, sir. All in favor? Two delegations. Rowan House Society.
Yeah, we have, Rowan House Society has requested to come and talk with council this evening, so I'll just turn this over to them.
Thank you. I think I got the mic. Hello, everyone, and thank you so much for having us today. My name is Kelly Smith, and I'm the Resource Development Team Lead for Rowan House, and this is our Executive Director, Lynette Solden. We have been in operation for 23 years, where Rowan House Emergency Shelter moved from a two-bedroom basement suite near Black Diamond originally to a 24-bed facility in High River. Originally named Eagle Women's Emergency Shelter, the shelter was only large enough to house two women and up to three children each. We're here today to provide a short update on some of the supports we have available for the residents of Clare's Home, and how we can support you to make a difference for the people in your life who may be affected by violence and abuse, or perhaps the constituents you may come across in your work. Our symbol is the Rowan House tree, commonly known as Mount Nash. You may ask why is the Rowan tree our symbol. The berries often retained through the winter on the Rowan tree symbolizes the endurance of life through the dark of the year, and the tree itself was said to afford protection to the dwelling by which it grew. The Rowan tree has traditionally been associated with peace, sanctuary, privacy, and beauty. The Rowan tree embodies and symbolizes what we at Rowan House stand for, and we're very proud to have one of the Mount Nash in our front yard. We service the second-largest geographic area in the province. The area served our Foothills County, the MD of Willow Creek, and Vulcan County. At Rowan House, Society, we provide a continuum of trauma-informed programs and services to help break the cycle of domestic violence and abuse in our communities by providing crisis intervention, long-term support, and prevention education and awareness. In doing so, we work to fulfill our vision that we all can thrive in safe and empowering relationships. So one of the first things that probably comes to your mind when you think about Rowan House is our emergency shelter facility for women with or without children who have left violent and abusive situations and are in need of a safe place to go. While this is our core mandate, we have grown to be much more than a short-term shelter with 24 beds. We have a 24-hour support line that provides telephone and text responses to all individuals seeking crisis support, information, or referrals to our programs, or community resources that best suit their needs. The 24-hour support line is available in multiple languages through our CanTalk. We have a specialized children's program that not only allows children to just be kids again, but trained staff provide them with tools for understanding their own big emotions and strategies for coping and healing. We also provide one-on-one support in the community setting through our outreach program for individuals who may need our services but not necessarily our shelter. This program is open to any individual, no matter of their gender identity or sexual orientation. And of course, we work from an upstream approach as well by providing preventative education and awareness for youth in schools, healthy relationship groups, and trainings and workshops for the public. We are pleased to provide presentations to West Meadow Elementary School and Willow Creek Composite High School here. Lastly, our Safe at Home pilot project, designed to be an alternative approach to serving families where the person who is perpetrating the violence and abuse is the one to move to a cool-down location and engages in programming while the individual and children who are experiencing abuse maintains the stability of their home and supports of their networks. I do want to also say a special thank you to Clare's hometown, as that we used to actually have our Safe at Home facility here, and we did recently just change our model, which was towards the end of September. But we, again, were so pleased, and everybody in the town was so welcoming, so thank you again for supporting us through this process. We also have some new and important positions that we have initiated, but before we focus on those initiatives, we want to reiterate why these services continue to be so very important. Despite seeing strong improvement in the 2000s, a StatsCan report released this past October showed that police-reported family violence has increased for the fifth year in a row, while intimate partner violence specifically has increased for the seventh straight year. Meanwhile, Corporal Leanne Beatty, the Domestic Violence Coordinator for Southern Alberta District in the RCMP, reported that in a seven-month period in 2021, officers responded to over 2,300 occurrences of domestic violence in her coverage area. Those numbers do not factor in the occurrences that most definitely go unreported, and Corporal Beatty says that in her experience, the number is high, and COVID certainly played a role in worsening the problem. In 2022, Rowan House received over 2,100 calls to our 24-hour support line, up from just over 1,500 the year before. During that same time, we admitted 216 women and children, up from just 130 the year before, which was partly due to the fact that we returned to full capacity after COVID, but is still up significantly from the 176 in 2019 pre-pandemic, so 216 women last year. So we are seeing a growing need, as well as a growing severity in what our clients are dealing with in terms of types of abuse and coping mechanisms, as well as greater mental health and substance overuse concerns. But moving forward, to address all of these complexities, thanks to a grant, we're able to have a dedicated court support worker to assist the clients of our various programs through the court process and help them understand the different types of protection orders they can have implemented in their family situations. We have a research and evaluation lead who is helping us to ensure data integrity and that all of our work is truly having the impact that we hope and expect. We have a shelter facility and safety advisor dedicated to enhance the safety of all our staff members, clients, and of course, the community. And we continue to expand our prevention program to empower the community to recognize the signs of domestic violence and abuse among your friends, family, and coworkers, so that you can support them and direct them to the services they need. We are pleased to offer lunch-and-learn workshops to anyone who is interested, as well as targeting trainings to industries that may more likely come in contact with somebody who needs support, such as hairdressers, pet groomers, nurses, and dentists. And finally, we know that not everyone has the time to take these kinds of trainings, so we have an educational podcast anyone can take at the convenience and comfort of their home, car, or even when they're on a walking path. It's available for free and is audio-streamed in most services. So just wanted to let everybody know, this is something that we're hugely, hugely proud of. Ally is our communication and marketing lead, and please check it out, because she has done a wonderful job in engaging the community members and getting a lot of really important information out there. All of these programs are accessible and offered at no cost, thanks to the generosity of the community. We do receive an annual grant from the government, the provincial government, but it is restricted to our emergency shelter program and primarily ensures that we have shelter support workers on-site 24/7 and able to answer our support line. Everything else that you heard tonight is fundraised. And the Alberta Domestic Violence Shelter sector hasn't had an operational funding increase in eight years and a staffing cost increase in nine years. The last increase in funding for domestic violence shelter staff wages was in 2014-15, and the last increase in funding for domestic violence shelter operational costs was in 2015-2016. Everything else that we provide, we have to fundraise through grants and donations. Our focus really is on collaborating with the community, from last year's picnic with a purpose, bringing organizations and businesses together, to being part of the Alberta Health Services Domestic Abuse Response Team, or DART, program, which we supported at the Clare's Home Dental Hospital Emergency Department. Like you, we want to do our part to ensure Clare's Home remains a safe and great place to live and have a family. Everyone's path to addressing domestic violence and abuse in their life looks different, which is why we have so many options for help and why we are working to raise awareness about all of these different options. Our hope is that after today's presentation, you have a little more confidence about how to refer someone should they need, they trust you to share what they're going through. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here today, to engage with your community through our Safe at Home program, and certainly, if you have any questions or need any additional assistance, feel free.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming back.
I, uh, not really a question. I, uh, I just wanted to thank them for their efforts and for coming down tonight and, uh, you know, enlighten us a bit, and it's tough getting the word out, and it's tough being front of mind, especially when, uh, things are, things are, people are having the worst day that they've had in a while. So, uh, thank you for coming down and letting us hear about this.
Absolutely. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I want you to leave, thank you everybody. You too.
You too. Delegation two, Kevin Van Tegen. Abe.
Yep, we'll just let Kevin introduce himself and, uh, meet with council and discuss why he's here.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much, council. Thank you for the, uh, Kevin.
Better turn around, Kevin. There you go.
Okay. Without glasses, I had to guess which button to push. So thank you very much for inviting me here and giving me the opportunity to introduce myself to you and to get to know your faces and hopefully form a connection that we can follow up on. My name's Kevin Van Tegen. I was born and raised in Calgary, Alberta. I've spent my entire life working primarily as a biologist and part of the time as a park warden and various other roles in Canada's national parks. I retired in 2011 from Banff National Park, where I was the superintendent for three and a half years, and I was enjoying my retirement quite a lot. I'm an author, so I spent a lot of time working on books in my retirement, but I set it aside and decided to step up and go back into public service one last time for a number of reasons. So, um, I guess the, uh, to explain why I'm here as a representative of the Alberta NDP Party and seeking election in this Livingston MacLeod riding, uh, there's a few questions that you can sort of explore that relate to that. First of all, what is my connection to the riding? I've worked in a number of different parts of Western Canada over the years, but I first got to be familiar with Livingston MacLeod specifically in the 1980s when I came down here and did, uh, did research on a article on the Three Rivers Dam on the Old Man River. That took me down the Old Man with my wife-to-be from Maycroft Rapids to near Pincher Station, and we interviewed ranchers along the way and ended up, uh, turning into a number of magazine articles. Uh, and that was the point where I really established a real personal connection to this landscape and to the people that live in this landscape. When I had the chance to move to Waterton as the park's first conservation biologist in 1993, um, it didn't take much convincing of either me or my wife to take that position. So we moved our three kids down to Waterton. I've often speculated that I didn't actually get the job on my merits, but simply by virtue of the fact that we had three more kids for their school, uh, that was at a risk of being closed. Nonetheless, did get closed three years later, but our kids then went on to finish their, or continue their schooling in Pincher Creek. When we moved down here, we bought property on the Old Man River, and, uh, and that's been basically the center of, uh, basically my home base ever since. It's now my permanent home because of the recognition that Keith and others have, have given me that it's, it's all fine to have connections to this place, but you actually need to be rooted in it. And I was already rooted, but my roots are now deeper. So, um, in the course of my work in Waterton Lakes National Park, I worked with the Territory Conservancy of Canada and the ranchers adjacent to the park to deal with some of the subdivision issues that were threatening those ranch lands in the, in the, uh, in the 1990s, and that led to the successful Waterton Front Initiative, which has protected an area about two or three times the size of Waterton to keep it in ranching and to keep it, uh, and to keep all the wildlife values that come with the fact that that land is managed for ranching. Also worked on a compensation program for predators. The Ralph Klein government canceled the provincial compensation program for livestock producers that suffered losses, and that was causing a few issues in our area, so we started up one on our own. It was a very interesting one. It involved environmentalists and ranchers and fish and wildlife people from the province and myself. It didn't, uh, it didn't have a great deal of success, but what it did do was lever the government back into opening their provincial program again, so that was a big success, was that we, we got the compensation program real established. So those initiatives and then later work in, in more, around the time of my retirement with the Livingston Landowners Group, which is based on the other side of the Procybe Hills from here, kept bringing me into touch with a lot of people who are very rooted in this landscape and rooted in the way in which we live in this landscape. We have a landscape here which is in incredibly good shape compared to many places in the world in the, at this, at this stage of the century, and one reason that it's in good shape is because of the quality of the people who live in it and the way in which they make a living. And none of that is assured. So, uh, these were people who were dealing with the changes that the world brings to our neck of the woods and trying to make sure that we have changed, when we do have change, that it doesn't compromise our cultural values, it doesn't, doesn't compromise our agricultural economy, and it doesn't compromise all the great natural attributes that we, that we benefit from here. So that's by way of explaining how I got to the point where I made the decision to step into politics, and that was really, uh, when the United Conservative Party took over the government in 2019 and promptly announced, or very quickly announced, that they were going to open the eastern slopes to coal mining. That was a shock to everybody because it was never discussed in the election campaign. It was sprung on us after the election campaign, and, um, those eastern slopes are the source of all our water, and anybody that lives in southwestern Alberta knows that water is scarce down here and extremely valuable, not just for agriculture but for, for our communities and for our environment. And yet, uh, that decision was made without any real consideration of that and without any consideration of the people that I'd worked with all those years that steward this landscape, that live in this landscape. So I found that very offensive, both in terms of making good public policy that deals with the strategic priorities of this province, but also in terms of how you treat your constituents, and it was not helped by the fact that, um, when the people in this community, in, in this riding and actually across the province, uh, organized to let the government know that they didn't support this, they got no support at all from the, from their representative here. And I thought, this is not how you govern. This is not how you represent your people, and this is not how you ensure that the things that you've been entrusted with will, will persist for future generations. So I had previously helped my predecessor, which is Cam Gardner, ranches west of Chian Lakes there, in his campaign, and I'd seen what he went through. It was a very, very challenging campaign. There was, it got pretty messy after a while, um, just because of the way politics seems to be done in some quarters these days. And so, um, I looked at that and I thought, now, here's a guy that's raising, uh, he's running a ranch, he's raising school-age kids, there's lots of good people in this riding, but they have things going on. You know, they have businesses to run, they have, they have, they have other priorities that are, they're in the middle of their life, and here I am, I've got a lifetime of public experience behind me, I've got a deep connection to this landscape and the people in this landscape, and I'm retired and doing nothing. Uh, I mean, I'm writing books, but you can do that anytime. So I thought, you know, I can't sit this one out. Uh, I come from a family with quite a deep history of public service values, and so I thought, I'm going to step up and, and, and offer to represent this constituency as their MLA in a Rachel Naughtley government. So that's sort of a short summary of why I'm here in front of you. What we've been doing since, I'm not sure how my, how my time is going, you're dealing with politicians now. Well, you guys are politicians. Okay, you understand. We've been canvassing the doorsteps of this riding and every community in this riding since about October. We've now hit over 2,500 doorways, and we're wrapping that effort up. At this point, it looks like we are approaching neck and neck with the UCP with a huge contingent of undecided voters out there, basically people that are a little bit shaken by the state of their, of their province's politics and aren't really sure where to park their vote. Uh, so we are contenders, but it's an uphill fight. What are we hearing on the doorsteps? A lot of concerns about the cost of living, utility bills that are out of control, tuition costs for those that have students in, in post-secondary education, groceries, which we don't have much control over, and then affordable housing is a big one. We're hearing about that in, in most of the communities in, in the riding. The other big one, obviously, is healthcare. We've seen this ongoing deterioration of healthcare now for a number of years, but now that really ramped up with the number of baby boomers retiring from the healthcare industry and getting sick and requiring healthcare, and then that was, of course, compounded by the, by the COVID epidemic. So healthcare has been a real concern for people both looking to access health services but also people working in the health industry. They are seriously burdened out, they are seriously stressed out, they're, they're, it's, it's hard times for, for some of them. I've had some long conversations. Those are the two top issues. The education in various dimensions are, are, are there, both in terms of aging school facilities, kids that aren't ready to come back to school and learn after the breaks during the pandemic, mental health issues that they're bringing with them, and this curriculum adventure that we've experienced for the last two or three years. So that comes up on certainly the doorsteps where there's children behind the door or else there's a teacher at the door. And a number of other issues, um, you know, the, the loss of agricultural land to, um, renewable energy facilities, the price of agricultural land, the impact that's having on people's succession plans, and, and, and things like that. Another big one is just people's distrust and uncomfort with government, like either not knowing who to vote for, not bothering to vote anymore because it seemed pointless. That's, that's very disconcerting to me. The commitment, one commitment I made to myself and am sharing with people from time to time as I talk to them is that I'm not going to just finish knocking on doors when the election is over. If, assuming that I'm elected, I will continue on knocking on doors the next four years because I'm learning things there that I've never learned before. I'm connecting with people in a way that you can never connect with them, and it's the right thing to do after the kind of representation that they've, that they've, they've experienced the last four years. So I guess in summary, why do I think it's important? I think that we are at a time of pretty significant fork in the road here for this province. I do believe all the trend lines are that we will have a Rachel Naughtley government, Alberta NDP government, probably a very small majority, and, but it will be primarily an urban government. It'll be elected in Edmonton, Calgary, Lethbridge, Edison Hat. That's not good enough. That government has to have rural representation, and I think that government needs to be represented in Livingston MacLeod, and the reason is because we've seen what happens when governments in Edmonton make decisions that affect us down here. We saw it with coal, we see it with their effort to, to impose provincial police force on our municipal governments. We need to be there to be part of it, to make sure that urban decisions don't affect rural communities in ways that don't work for us. And by the same token, I think we need to take our best qualities to Edmonton and make them part of Alberta, and I want to be part of both of those things. So I guess that's, uh, that's a, I don't know how I did in my time limit, but that's my introduction to, to one of the candidates that are, that is running in our May 29th election, and I hope to represent you all, and as a result of that, I hope to have many conversations with you, but I do appreciate the chance to at least introduce myself to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Action items. Correspondence. Honorable Rebecca Schultz. Abe.
Yeah, correspondence from Minister of Municipal Affairs. Sorry, yeah, Minister of Municipal Affairs, CC to Minister of Education as well as it pertains to both ministries. This is involving JUPAs or Joint Use Planning Agreements, and a couple of years ago, the Municipal Government Act, um, had a provision that municipalities and school boards had to come to joint use planning agreements by June 10th of this year. They're getting considerable feedback from municipalities and school boards that it's going to be difficult to meet that deadline, and so what they've done is extended the deadline for another two years. And basically, we do have, currently have a joint use planning agreement with the school division. It outlines planning use, planning considerations, um, long, long-term planning for land reserve and also joint use of the facilities, town facilities and school facilities as well. So that has to be under this legislation, those have to be a bit more rigorous. They require more meetings between representatives of the town and the school divisions, just to make sure that the, uh, JUPAs are meeting everybody's needs and any problems are being addressed. So again, we have that deadline to have these done, uh, these JUPAs completed, it's been extended by a couple of years. We have already started speaking with the school division and, and working through these administratively.
Mayor Dave McKenzie, town of Barhead.
So there's, uh, some information here from the town of Barhead requiring, um, EPR program revisions, uh, and specifically looking for newspapers to be exempt from, from that. EPR stands for Extended Producer Responsibility, and that refers to, um, recycling, uh, programs and trying to pass the responsibility from municipalities in the province for recycling onto the producer of, of the product. So what happens right now is municipalities run extensive recycling programs, um, and it looks like the provincial government has implemented some program whereby there's more responsibility on the producer of recycling products to either reduce or to recycle themselves. This correspondence here, they're requesting that newspaper media be exempt from that as it would pose a, uh, they feel it would pose a significant threat to their primary medium, which is, which is newsprint. We haven't done a lot of, looked into this a lot administratively. Uh, if, if council wants us to, we can, otherwise it's on there as a correspondence item.
Correspondent, School Age Care Directors Association of Alberta.
So this organization has, uh, requested, or is looking for, uh, organizations and municipalities to support, um, their Lights On After School, Lights On After School Alberta Day, uh, which is April 21st. Looks like they've been doing this for several years now. I believe this is the first time we've received, received this request at this council, but essentially, there's a proclamation here to support and recognize, uh, out-of-school programming for children and the safety that it provides for communities. They're asking that municipalities light up their landmarks in yellow and blue as well. Generally, council doesn't make these proclamations or recognize specific days. Uh, that's been, um, council's approach since I've been here.
And since we don't have lights on our landmark that change colors, I don't think this is something we can do. I fought for that once. Rod?
Um, yes, we, we do have our colored lights on our landmark. Um, would it be appropriate that this get forwarded to, um, our after, after-school program for at least their awareness and consideration?
Yeah, we can do that for sure.
All right. Correspondence. APWA, Alberta Chapter. Abe.
Another, um, another proclamation request. This one is from the American Public Works Association. Public Works Week is coming up, uh, at the end of May, I believe. I'm just pulling it up here. Uh, May 21st to 27th. Uh, there's also, again, a statement or proclamation that the council or town can make. In the past, the town has kind of recognized this administratively. Uh, we, we have done that. Usually print, uh, something in the, uh, the local news that week, just recognizing public works, uh, and, uh, something internally, uh, some donuts and coffee and whatnot. Uh, but it is interesting to have a read at, obviously, the public works staff do a considerable amount to keep our municipalities running, and so, uh, we will definitely be sure to draw attention to that internally.
Sounds good.
Correspondence. WCC. Correspondence. WCCHS Graduating Class.
So council at the last meeting receives a request to participate in the Dunk Tank and their fundraiser for their graduates for the high school. And they figured, they wanted to get us involved a little bit more. And they have a request for council, for the town, to contribute to a basket for their auction. Cost is $35. And a gift in the amount of $35 is what they're requesting. And again, this is to assist with fundraising for the graduates.
Councillor Cutler.
Can I make a motion to donate a gift basket that we generally do up for auctions in the value of $50? Was it $100? Okay, $100 basket. Yeah, that's typical baskets that we do up. Yep, I'd like to make a motion to do a $100 basket for their Simon auction.
Perfect. Question?
Move by councillor Cutler to provide a gift basket worth approximately $100 to the WCCHS Spring Festival to be held on April 28th, 2023 at WCCHS.
All those in favor? Approved. Request for decision. Bulk Water Station. Abe.
So the Bulk Water Station is up for replacement. It's at the end of its useful life at about 40 years, requiring a lot of repairs. As council knows, we've had conversations about this dating back a few months now. And we have been working with the MD on a joint, making the replacement of this station, a joint project. And we have, both councils have kind of informally agreed, we have built this into our 2023 capital budget. However, we haven't actually had approval of that budget yet. We just have an interim budget. Operations is looking to get started on building this. And so we're looking for approval today to go ahead with that, approval of that project. In addition, we have a joint use agreement for your consideration that would outline the expectations for the MD and the town in this project of replacing the Bulk Water Station. Just in accordance with previous conversations between the two councils, the MD would contribute 65% of the cost up to $65,000. Water rates, they have requested that they would equal the intermunicipal water rates. Customers would pay for the transaction fees. The town will maintain the water station for the life of the unit, but not be required to replace the unit at the end. And we have also established individual cost, life expectancies, costs, and maintenance thresholds. So the town's not on the hook if something keeps breaking, not on the hook to replace it indefinitely. But once it reaches a threshold, those thresholds are in the agreement, then we can either open new conversations with the MD or just stop maintaining the unit.
Discussion. Comments. Councillor Cutler.
So in here it says that the MD contributes 65% of the cost of construction up to $65,000. Is there a $100,000 kind of estimate for this project?
No, we are estimating, I think when we came to last year, it was somewhere around 70,000 or 80,000. But we decided to do a lot of the building ourselves, and we have it around 55,000 now.
So, okay. So then in here it says 55,000 on our end. So we now have $110,000 for the project. Is that correct?
Well, 55,000 to be funded from capital reserves and from the MD of Willow Creek, the two combined.
So in plain sense, my math, can I guess is they're going to cover 65% of the project, we're going to cover 45% of the project?
Yes.
35. Thanks for the math. But it's not 55,000 of our pocket. See, the way I read the two numbers. So, okay, so we're going to cover 35% of the project?
Yes.
And that's that number, we're in our budget that we have tentatively?
Yes, that's correct. That's correct. So it'll be 35% of 55,000.
Well, that was my question, because I remember $80,000 was one of the numbers. Now we're up to 110,000, but I was...
Total project cost 55,000 is what we're estimating. The town would pay for 35%.
35%. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? Could I have a motion to move forward on this project? Councillor Carlson. Question?
Move by councillor Carlson to approve the Bulk Water Station upgrade as presented at a projected cost of $55,000 plus GST, to be funded from capital reserves and the Municipal District of Willow Creek.
All in favor? Question?
Again, that just reads to me that that's $55,000 being budgeted out of our capital reserve. That's what that reads to me.
It says at a projected cost of 55,000 plus GST to be funded from capital reserves and the MD of Willow Creek.
Okay. Okay. Good. Sorry.
The agreement outlines that the costing structure.
That's fine. Okay, no, that's fine.
I'll also make a motion to approve the Bulk Water Cost Sharing.
We just did that.
The agreement...
No, we did one. We just need to do the other one. Oh, okay.
Did they vote?
They did.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, we voted. He just knew I had a questionable look on my face. That's why he asked.
So councillor Zimmer, are you doing the other one?
Yeah.
Move by councillor Zimmer to approve the Bulk Water Cost Sharing and Maintenance Agreement with the Municipal District of Willow Creek as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision. Miscellaneous Fees Policy Update. Abe.
So for your consideration, council, is some changes, recommended changes to miscellaneous fees policy. We are recommending that we remove dog license fees as we have those included in the current dog bylaw. So that's one change we're recommending. Additionally, we're recommending changes to assessment review board hearings, specifically for the composite assessment review board hearings. That's for residential dwellings of four or more units as well as non-residential assessment reviews. So our residential is currently at the maximum that it can be legislated at, which is $50 for the appeal. We have had an increase in CARB hearings and appeals recently. Those generally cost us about $1,000. By the time the hearing has gone through, it costs us about $1,000. And our rates are currently at, set at $600. We're recommending to charge to the maximum for those assessment hearings at $650 to recover a little bit more of our costs. Still coming short, but a little closer recovery. Of course, these increases do not affect any appeals that have merit or any appeals that are successful. They will get their application fees returned to them. Not a lot left to say on that. Questions?
Councillor Cutler.
So we're suggesting two changes, right? 300 to 400?
Yes, thank you.
Now, is that the maximum for that one as well?
I don't have that off the top of my head. I do know the maximum is 650 for four more dwellings of 300,000 or more.
Right, okay. So again, just for my clarity's sake, so these are the fees that somebody has to pay when they do an appeal?
Yes.
And then if they're successful, they get their 400 or their $650 back. It still costs us $1,000, but because they're successful, they get their money back?
Yes.
Councillor Carlson.
I'll move for the changes.
Question?
Move by councillor Carlson to adopt the updated miscellaneous fees policy, policy number 5.9.05, version 1.3, as presented effective April 11th, 2023.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision. Fair Day Street Closures.
So we are out a little bit earlier this year perhaps with the street closure, but looking for a closure for fair days, just so the individual who's planning to run the street market this year can begin with the planning. Would like that, has requested that council approve the street closure. So the request is to close 49th Avenue West from the lane between Second Street West and First Street West to Third Street West, including the intersection at Second Street West, on Saturday, August 12th, from 7:30 AM to 11:00 PM, and including the use of Amundson Park for fair days activities. This will create, traditionally, what we've done is closed the roadway off on 49th, that Second Street. We're proposing to extend it into, towards, to the west up to Amundson Park. And opening up the parking lot downtown as well as a lot of the activities will flow there. So that's one small difference that we're asking for this year. And the closure would be open during the parade route as well. Sorry, the barricades would be removed during the parade route.
Discussion. Questions?
So they're asking to shut down Second Street Intersection for the whole day? Except for the parade?
Yeah, correct. Yeah.
Just that whole corridor right down to Amundson Park?
Yes.
Yeah, it's the yellow strip.
Yeah, I see that now. I didn't read it, that they wanted Second Street Intersection.
Any other questions, concerns? Have a motion, please. Motion by councillor Meister. Question?
Move by councillor Meister to approve the closure of 49th Avenue West from the lane between Second Street West and First Street West to Third Street West, including the intersection at Second Street West, on Saturday, August 12th, 2023, from 7:30 AM to 11:00 PM, including the use of Amundson Park for fair days activities.
All those in favor? Approved. Request for decision. Regional Energy Management.
So Alberta Southwest, who is one of the regional economic development associations that we are aligned with at the town here, the other being Southgrove, has recently had a meeting of their membership and are proposing that they have a regional energy manager or seeking interest from municipalities in a regional energy manager. There is an energy manager currently in Pincher Creek who's been conducting energy management assessments and programs, seeking grants for municipal use. I believe the energy manager has also been working with Crow's Nest Pass. And so has been having some success in pursuing grants and finding ways for the municipalities to become more energy efficient. And so, again, Alberta Southwest is seeking interest from their membership to see if other municipalities in the region would be interested in regionalizing that service. The idea there, the energy manager would come to town, help do assessments on town facilities, find areas for improvement, energy efficiency, ways for us to manage our consumption better, and then assist us with pursuing grants and grant funding to possibly retrofit buildings with better, cleaner technology. So what they're seeking is a letter of commitment from council. No cost to the town. If successful, it would be a funded, grant-funded position. And we're recommending that council approve this. Any questions or comments from council?
I just wanted to mention Tabor has an energy manager. He's been in place for two years. He's saved the Town of Tabor $344,000 in energy savings. Tristan Walker is the manager in Pincher Creek. It's a joint system with the MD of Pincher Creek and the Town of Pincher Creek. The first year, he saved 59, $60,000. Councillor Cutler?
I understand and appreciate that this is a grant-funded program. And I guess we do probably support Alberta Southwest through some of our fees. So even maybe worst case for a bit, it could be rolled into that. But at some point, somebody's going to ask for some funding of this. Now, based on what you've said, though, it should be relatively self-supporting, at least in its early stages, because there's always a lot of low-hanging fruit about energy savings and so on. But anyway, I guess I'm cautiously in agreement with this, but I do await the other shoe at some point in the future.
Any other concerns, questions?
So any potential findings would come with a request to council. And they would be able to, council will be able to approve or deny any costs associated with any findings from the studies. I think one of the benefits, I didn't mention earlier, of this is that there is, for several years now, there have been a lot of federal and provincial grants associated with these kinds of projects. And we do currently have some monitoring and assessing going on at a couple of our facilities, but we haven't really gone down that path yet. And so this is a great opportunity for Clare's Home to get into that conversation.
When it says some administrative work will be required, who is that?
Right now, that'll probably be me, but I can delegate it to various staff. Really, what we'd be looking at as he's an energy manager, we'd be connecting him with town facilities, doing assessments of the facilities. And so people would have to let him in, do meter reads, connecting with the utility service providers, and just seeing what our consumption is like, those kinds of administrative things. We may, from time to time, have to provide a desk for him to work out of a couple of days here and there, which is not a problem.
All we're approving tonight is a request for him, a letter of support for him to write that grant. Anything further than that will come back to us.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we provide a letter of commitment and support to Alberta Southwest Regional Energy Management.
Question?
Move by councillor Zimmer that the Town of Clare's Home provide a letter of commitment and support to the Alberta Southwest Regional Energy Management Program.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision. Golf Course Alcohol Approval. Abe?
Yes, so the restaurant is under new management. There's a new vendor in the Golf Course Restaurant. And so they consequently must apply for alcohol liquor license in order to serve alcohol from their establishment. No issues with them serving there, other than they want to have beer cart. And according to the lease, they need specific permission from council to have, to serve liquor. to have, to serve liquor outside of the restaurant. So that is the, the beer cart. And so just looking for council's approval for that.
Questions, concerns, discussion? Counselor Kettles?
I so, I so moved.
I'm just wondering, like I did a whole lot of research, just a little bit, but how come we never had to do this before? Like what's, what has changed that we have to do this now?
We had to do this ten years ago, I don't know.
Oh.
That's why it's going to do this.
There's been, there's been several different managers in there since then.
Maybe you got missed, I don't know.
And it could be, it could be a different administrator on the other end of the approvals as well. Don't know.
One simple question. Do we hold any responsibility for any of their liquor responsibilities on the golf course? If we sign, like, is, is it still them just holding it? Why, like, are we assuming any responsibility for the alcohol on the golf course? Has that been looked into?
That specific question hasn't been asked, no. But they are, they are a different organ, a separate organization than us, and it's, it's leased out to them.
Right, it's the same thing as a beer garden?
Yeah.
Right, type, because that what we're looking at? Like, that's what I looked at it as, was that, but it's just weird that we've never had to do this before.
So AGLC will, will also require proof of insurance.
Right.
This one does strike me as a little odd, and I, I mean, I was a vendor there for five years. However, again, yeah, depending on which official you're dealing with can sometimes change the parameters. As far as being the legal landowner of anything, you still face liability anytime it's on you.
Right, exactly. We've never been able to get away from liability before. I just wondered because of this new question that we've never really dealt with before, if there was more responsibility being had. That's why I was-
I don't see any, any, any more liability.
I like it.
But, yeah, this is a little unprecedented.
Yeah, it's weird.
I will move that we give them the letter.
Counselor Kettles? Oh, sorry. Question?
I so moved.
Moved by Counselor Kettles, the town of Clares Home approved two four eight seven six one nine Alberta Limited to sell alcohol at the bridges at Clares Home Golf Club, both in the clubhouse restaurant and on the golf course itself.
All in favor? Approved. Financial report, statement of operations, February twenty-eighth. Abe?
Just for your information, council, the updated financials as of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Any questions?
Questions, concerns? All right, moving on.
I make a motion to accept the consolidated income statement for February twenty-eighth as presented.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to accept the consolidated statement of operations for the month ended February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Information brief, community justice center. Abe?
So community justice centers, justice centers are alternative approaches to the formal justice system, designed to move justice out of the traditional courtroom and into a community setting. They bring together health, justice, health and social services to address root causes of crime, break cycle of offending, and improve community safety. Sorry. Technical issues here. There we go. So the provincial government recently held a few information sessions. They're considering this model in, in Alberta more fully, and have reached out to communities across the province to just have an initial feel for their thoughts and inputs into what that might look like in the province. It looks like they are consulting with the federal government as well on the, on the topic. So our FCSS director attended three engagement sessions hosted by Alberta Justice and has provided this report here, just for council's information, on potential implementation of these programs in the province. I'll just read a few of the comments. Essentially, there's no standard criteria for community justice centers, but the, the idea is that each community has its own unique needs, and similar to FCSS in the province. And so there would be a fair bit of freedom, it sounds like, on how those programs would be run by the community, within certain parameters, of course. It's widely thought that these centers will involve significant collaboration with various stakeholders to achieve a fair, effective, and humane justice system. I guess some concerns that the FCSS had was where will the funds come from? If, if and when these programs are actually implemented in the province? How long will the funds last? Who's going to be, who's going to be expected to be coordinating the justice centers? What level of funding will be there for the administration of these things? Again, these were just information sessions, province putting out feelers. So as they, they look to implement these strategies, restorative justice strategies in the province.
We have a youth justice committee in town and across Alberta. Is that different than that, or is this a duplication? I sit on that committee.
And youth justice? So this would be, this would be more geared towards adults, I believe. I'm not sure where they would overlap.
Right, okay. Information brief, municipal tax rate comparisons. Abe?
Just in anticipation of budget, the budget season and tax rate bylaw season, administration has prepared some information for council and for the public on different municipal comparators, specifically residential and non-residential tax rates, expenditures and revenues per capita. The information we gathered was from the provincial government that has a very customizable tool that's useful for public members, whereby they can pull up their municipality and make comparisons to other municipalities in, in the area, comparable municipalities. They do have a logic on their website for what municipalities you actually compare to, so you know you're comparing as close as possible apples to apples. Generally, it's a population assessment base and location, I believe, are the three main criteria to determine comparability. And so we have generated some, some information here for you, council, comparing us to, comparing Clares Home, rather, to other municipalities in the area. We shared this at an audit finance, finance committee meeting, and council requested that this come to council meeting. So in terms of residential rates, residential tax rates, which is table one, the average municipal residential tax rate for comparable communities is eight point three, and Clares Home sits at six point nine. So compares favorably as well to neighbors in Nanton, who sit at nine point eight, Pincher Creek at nine point eight, and Cardston at seven point six. Fort McLeod is, is lower than Clares Homes at six point two. And the average non-residential municipal tax rate, Clares Home is closer to the average there, the, the average there being twelve percent, and Clares Homes is at eleven point six. Revenues per capita. We also have some comparisons on revenues per capita and franchise and concession contracts per capita and expenses per capita. Clares Home as well sits favorably to our neighbors in expenses per capita as well, and we thought that was noteworthy to point out, and something that council can share with the residents. Per capita expenditures for the year were twenty-two hundred dollars in Clares Home, in Fort McLeod, twenty-five forty-one, Nanton, thirty-one eighty-five. So again, the message that we're trying to promote here and, and share with the residents of the community is that our tax rates are comparable and better, both in terms of residential and non-residential, and our expenditures per capita. Council has held expenditures at this time. Difficult time, as expenditures and cost of living are increasing, has managed to hold expenditures lower than our neighbors as well per capita. So we'll be sharing that on Facebook, we'll be sharing that on the website as well. If you'd like us to share that information anywhere else, just let us know.
Thank you. I encourage everyone to look at this. All right? Okay, information brief, rural northern immigration program update. Abe?
Yeah, the economic development officer has prepared some information for council and for the community. Update on the rural northern immigration pilot program, which, as you know, is a pilot program that we have entered into with the federal government as an immigration pathway into the town. So as of March thirty-first of this year, the economic development committee has issued fifty community recommendations for full-time, permanent employment. This has involved twenty-four different employers in the town, as well as in the M D. And when you include all of the family members that these people, these immigrants have brought with them, it equals about a hundred and thirty-five people who have come to, to live in Clares Home from thirteen different countries. Some information here about that not everybody who has come has stayed, some people have left. So a hundred of the hundred and thirty-five approved have arrived in Clares Home, with some still yet to arrive. And at least five candidates who have arrived have relocated themselves for other employment, different access to different services, or to be in an urban center. So some information on where the immigrants are coming from. Thirty-nine percent from the Philippines, thirty-three percent from India, ten percent from China and Hong Kong, four percent from Pakistan, and two percent each from Brazil, Chile, Germany, Nigeria, Zambia, Turkey, Ukraine, and Switzerland. There's a list of, as well a list of businesses that they have come and, that have participated in the program. I think it's worth noting as well that without this program, our, our census numbers, the last census, probably would have dropped rather than grown, so. No, not, not necessarily any request for decision here, council, just was looking to share an update on that program to the community.
Thank you. Information brief, council committee reports. Anything, anybody want to add?
Brad and I went to that.
Public Safety Minister.
Yeah. They are aware. It's for that, the policing, provincial police. Yes, they are aware that a lot of work needs to be done. I still don't think they realize how much work is going to need to be done. I did ask a couple of questions, then I asked, maybe I asked them wrong or not clear, because my answers kind of got skirted in a political answer, I guess, but my concerns were like the infrastructure that we have, like with the R C M P being federal. If somebody's in B C and does something, somebody in Ottawa can see that. Well, if we go provincial, are we going to have our own? And if I do something silly in Clares Home, could somebody in Moose Jaw see that I'm being silly? They said if, well, yeah, there'd be lots of communication, like Lathbridge would communicate with Clares Home. Really isn't what I asked, that was, that was the answer I got. So they are aware that there's a lot of work that needs to be done, but it-
To be determined, I guess.
Yeah, it wasn't. Boy, it's not very, it doesn't look very, it's pretty grim.
Yeah, it was pretty political, as always. Counselor Kettles?
I, I just, you know, as I put on my swami hat here, I just see some years down the road that we're probably not going to have a choice. The R C M P are going to get out of the contract policing business, and then, you know, it's going to be foisted upon us. So while, while my, my left hand says, I hope the province doesn't move ahead with the initiative, it may be good to do a little bit groundwork, just in case the R C M P just decide that, you know, come twenty thirty, they're no longer in the business. So I, I guess that's, that's my comment on that.
That's this government's story, and they're sticking to it, but I don't believe it.
Hasn't been confirmed.
No. I also asked about like Ert and special, like dog teams and heinous crimes and stuff, but again, that all got deflected.
Scared it. Information brief, council resolution status. Any questions? Okay. Could I get a motion to adopt the information items? Counselor Carlson? Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to adopt the information items as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Motion to go in camera. Counselor Cutler? Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to go in camera at eight oh seven p.m. for the following items, A, land, FOIP section sixteen, B, personnel, FOIP section seventeen.
All in favor? Camera?
I'll make a motion to come out of in camera?
All in favor? Motion on FOIP section sixteen.
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Cutler? Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to counter the offer submitted by Professional Truck Driving School Limited with a fur price of eighty-nine thousand five hundred dollars for the property located at lot seven and eight, block four, plan seven nine one zero zero three two, subject to obtaining a development permit within one year from date of title transfer.
All in favor? Approved. Could I have a motion for FOIP section seventeen? Counselor Carlson? Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to direct the economic development officer to pursue option A regarding economic development staffing as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Motion to adjourn, Counselor Carlson? Camera?